You know, the city of Coachella, the city council regular meeting, the Coachella, the council city has a Coachella sanitary district, Coachella fire protection district, Coachella financing authority, Coachella education and government access cable channel corporation, Coachella water authority and the success agency to Coachella redevelopment agency. It's March eighth, we're going to go ahead and start this meeting and again pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty-one along with the governor state of emergency declaration issued on March fourth, twenty twenty. This meeting will be conducted via teleconference. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at six oh two. I've got to ask our city attorney that if they can note for the record, the attendance, and then we'll do the pledge allegiance all over again, and I'm going to ask our planning director this time to lead us in the pledge allegiance. We do have a full house.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with every routine justice from.
Welcome council member Delgado. We're going to move on to approve of the agenda. At this time, the council board preparation authority may announce any items being pulled from the agenda continued another day. Mr. City manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to add item three B, an emergency is the approval of the color schemes for the Coachella fire station. This is a critical path item that it will impact the structure schedule if not approved today.
You said number four.
Three B.
Now, it's going to be on presentations right there. It'll be three B underneath Olean strategies and presentations. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda with modifications?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, move on to a proclamation to Brooke. There you are, get up here. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the city council to join us, maybe Lee, maybe if you want to join us as well, and maybe say a few words. Marco, get up here, your whole team.
All right, we're going to read it and then we'll allow for everyone to say a few words. Is the city of Coachella proclamation, whereas book, whereas Booksy Vian, a Salvadoran Mexican-American and a native of Southern California who attended Rider University in New Jersey, and whereas relocated to the Coachella Valley in twenty twenty to further her amateur boxing career, and whereas began training at Lias Pinosas Coachella Valley Boxing Club in Coachella, and whereas she made her first amateur debut in May twenty twenty-one in Nicaragua and won by TKO. And whereas in December of twenty twenty-two, Brooke became the number one female boxer in a hundred and fourteen pound division or USA boxing. Whereas in eighteen months, Brooke has achieved an impressive record of sixteen, one and two national champions. Whereas Brooke has an opportunity to clinch a spot in the national team representing El Salvador at twenty twenty-four Paris Olympic Games. Now therefore, the mayor of Coachella, Steve Hernandez, and the city council, by the power vested in us, do hereby congratulate Brooke Sivrian on her early successes and urge all citizens of the city of Coachella to wish her well on her upcoming bouts.
Good evening, thank you so much. I proudly represent the Lee Spinoza Coachella Valley Boxing Club. Our team is really dedicated to, excuse me, we're really dedicated and motivated to continue the legacy that we has started, leading with my coach, Marcos Caballero, who is a really strong pillar of the community, my fiance who's by my side, Jose, the rest of the team, as well as Emmy who's sitting in the, in the audience with me and his dad, also part of our strong team. I thank everybody again for this acknowledgement and I will strive my very best to continue making the city proud and our team as well.
Do you know anything about boxing, Marco?
No, love it. I know, just once again, I want to thank Coachella, the city of Coachella, to supporters, and I think me and him have done a great job over the years, about thirty-five years, thirty-five years, fighting, loving each other. They spend more time with him, they spend more time with that, so we know each other. No, but it's been a great run. We very proud to represent the Coachella, we have a lot of champion. And I think we should continue to bring a champion to the Coachella Valley. I think in the whole valley, we were the only ones who have national champions, and I think we have three national champions and out of all the gyms in the Coachella Valley. So we're very proud of you. Another kid has been one, has been winning a lot of tournaments, ringside, the golden gloves, the junior league, great fighter, there's going to be, and his dad and other coaches help us out. But we're just going to say thank you guys, thank everyone to support us, and we're going to keep our name high every year.
So we're going to go to Detroit, for a national qualifier, and we're going to try to get China back.
I just want to say congratulations to both of you and all of your success. I think it's amazing what you all have done to represent the city, to represent the boxing club, to represent your families, your home countries. I think for us, you know, we look at this as, as this is part of what we can do as a city council, as a city, to support athletes like yourself. If you're a student, or if you are not a student and you're an adult with aspirations and want to be successful, we are here for you. And there's this amazing legacy of what Lee has done, and Marcus over here, the guy knows a little bit, something about boxing, you know, he's got a few kids that did a little something, you know, and, and you know, there's, and it's an incredible story. They were literally next door at the fire station and it became the boxing club. A bunch of Sabura used to go out there and train, and Lee would be out there going bow, 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 that's your big green, that still does.
But no, we had a big round like here, at this, when we were in Coachella, a lot of like Suma Nelson, a lot of incredible fighters, they changed, here, the Marmado Five, some big ones that here, and over there where we are right now, all of our champions, you name it, the guys, even Alex Arroyo from Nicaragua, from all over the place.
Yeah, they all go to Coachella, but they don't tell us when they're going, they doesn't tell us. But here's the other thing that's pretty amazing is that then they moved from the boxing club here and to Bagduma, and then the city built them a little something, and then they had a big fundraising campaign and they extended the boxing club, like thousand square feet. Is the sauna working, do you, that we need to fix that? The sauna, is it working?
No, no, no.
You don't want to fix it?
I want to fix it.
Okay, you don't want to fix it?
I put a sign there, you know, no, no, no. People go in there without my permission, no, no.
No, no, you don't want to, you don't want to fix the sauna.
We've done for the years, like some years.
Yeah, it's just amazing on what has occurred and congratulations, you did a good job. We all got a great, just, we were pleased with that because we know Lee and he'd be on like HBO Live or Showtime Live and whatever, and he's training the guy on the corner, and he'd be like, hey Julio, bow, bow, Julio, bow, bow, and that's Coachella thing. Anyhow, now Jacob Alvarez, you're here to present on Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program presentation, exciting news.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Today we have Mission Asset Fund here to provide an update on the city's immigrant families recovery program. Some of you are newly elected, they will provide you a brief summary of the program. Mission Asset Fund will also provide an update in the efforts to get Coachella families through the application process. I would like to add that this will be the first of several updates that you'll be provided. We plan on providing updates several times this year, beginning in June, and then again around October. These updates will include how financial assistance is positively affecting these families' lives. With that, we have Ms. Joanna Cortez Hernandez on Zoom, and she'll go ahead and present. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Hernandez, how are you? Welcome.
I'm doing well, thank you for asking, and hello, everyone. I hope y'all are doing just as well as I am, and just give me a second here, I should have already enabled the screen sharing, can y'all just confirm that you can in fact see my, my screen here?
He looks like a young one, that is.
We can see.
Yeah, it's good, it's good, good.
Awesome, wonderful, thank you so much. All right, so as Jacob mentioned, I have the honor of being here present with y'all to share the latest updates around the Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program, which is a very special partnership that we have with the city of Coachella here. So to do a little bit of context setting first, both as a refresher for many of us who were a part of the design and implementation of this program for, from day one, and more as new information for folks that perhaps weren't around since the start but are getting caught up to speed. This partnership between the city of Coachella and Mission Asset Fund, also known as the MAP, was really meant so that we can together help families living in the city of Coachella rebuild their financial lives with dignity. The goal of the program was to enroll a hundred and forty immigrant families into the program and for those families to receive four hundred dollars in monthly cash assistance as a gift for twelve or twenty-four months, and for these families to also receive access to a variety of different financial services, including one-on-one financial coaching, access to exclusive financial education workshops, and also just the opportunity to connect with others in the city who are also participating in the program and to engage in community and conversation with them. As a reminder of the eligibility behind this program, as was mentioned, it really is to target folks, families living in the city of Coachella. Applicants are also required to be eighteen years of age or older, have a current non-expired government-issued photo ID, have at least one child aged seventeen and under who's living in their household in twenty twenty-one, and in twenty twenty-one have earned less than seventy-five K or a total household income below a hundred and fifty K. Individuals applying to the program were also required to have been excluded from receiving any sort of federal COVID nineteen relief in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, including the expenditure tax credit. I want to just underscore the importance of this requirement here in helping us target immigrant families who have been excluded repeatedly from receiving any type of support from the government. Now, to talk a little bit more about the timeline behind this, this program and this special partnership that we have together back in August twenty twenty-two, as many of you may recall, is when the city and MAP began to talk about the design of this program. We then went ahead and we launched a public application portal in October of that same year, and as early as December of that same year, MAP began to approve applications and began to then send out approval notifications to families who were being selected to join. That meant that as early as that same month in December of last year, MAP was also able to disperse the first set of monthly cash payments to families that were approved and enrolled into the program. And the latest update here is that as of last month, we closed the application because we have successfully met our goal in terms, in terms of the number of applications approved and families enrolled. And all of this was no small feat whatsoever, there was a lot of work that happened on both fronts to be able to make sure that we were spreading the word and to make sure that we were supporting clients in every step of the application process. So let's spend a couple minutes just talking a little bit about what that looked like. So in terms of joint outreach efforts, Mission Asset Fund and the city of Coachella collaborated on a variety of different outreach strategies. We created a custom webpage and social media kit that was shared with local community organizations on the ground supporting families in accessing this opportunity. We also ran radio and Facebook ads. We hosted bilingual informational webinars. We also held an outreach and application support event at City Hall in November. And in all of this really is a partnership that we built with local community organizations like Lift to Rise, like CFF, like COFAM, and many other allies, a part of the Coachella Valley Equity Collaborative. And that has led us to what we've been able to accomplish in terms of enrollment in the program. So from start to finish, from October of twenty twenty-two to February of twenty twenty-three, we received three hundred and ninety applications. One hundred and forty of those applications were successfully submitted by folks that were eligible for the program, and we have enrolled a hundred and thirty-nine families currently. And in fact, this week, we are working on getting that final family enrolled. They recently just received their reloadable prepaid card, and we're working with them to make sure that they get it activated and that they receive their first monthly cash assistance payment. So we are just right around the corner of that, one hundred and thirty-nine families being one hundred and forty total. In terms of funds dispersed and funds committed as of the last month, so in terms of what has been dispersed, we have dispersed a hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars to families, and in terms of what we have committed to disperse, that is eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars by February of twenty twenty-five. And looking ahead, one thing that I want to circle back to that I briefly touched upon is this financial services piece. We know that cash assistance alone isn't going to support immigrant families in rebuilding their financial lives. Financial services are equally as important, and so we are making sure that we are connecting families, a part of the Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program, to the financial services that, that they need to be able to support them in the goals that they've set for themselves in their financial lives and to ultimately allow them to recover. And so what are those financial services? Like I mentioned earlier, it's financial coaching, which is individualized, one-on-one support. It is group financial education, which we're offering live online via Zoom on a variety of different financial topics like how to build credit. And it is also our own in-house built MyMAC app, which is able to connect clients to financial education tools and personalized action plans. And so while enrollment into the program has concluded, our engagement with clients hasn't, we'll continue to reach out to them to promote the variety of free bilingual and relevant financial services that we have to offer to them. And another way that we are going to continue meaningfully engaging with client past enrollment is through storytelling. We want to make sure that we are continuing to have conversations with clients who uplift their financial recovery stories and strategies, because we believe ultimately that it is by engaging with clients and by uplifting those stories and strategies that we're going to be able to influence policy conversations and advocate alongside the city of Coachella for better programs that support immigrant families who have continued to be excluded from federal relief. And as I conclude here, the presentation on Coachella IFRP, I welcome y'all to just take one or two minutes to read this quote from Ramona, who is a Coachella IFRP participant, who just shares about the importance and the impact that this program has had in her financial life. And after you take that minute in reading this amazing quote here, I invite you all to share any comments or questions that you might have that I may be able to address. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Joanna.
Any questions? Well, I'm glad that we are meeting our program goals in terms of the hundred and forty families that would be enrolled in this program, just as a comment. All right, we'll move on now to Olean Strategies quarterly update.
Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you all.
Good evening, members of the council, it is a pleasure to be before you today. I definitely see smooth faces, Dr. Figueroa, Councilman, certainly looking forward to working with you in the coming months and years. Today I want to provide an update on the state of play of things in Sacramento with a focus on the fiscal side of the ledger and then the legislative side, but I will spend the bulk of my time really discussing an opportunity that I believe should enable the city to draw down significant resources for an upcoming state mandate that we're expecting this month that I'll go into in a little detail.
Was there a PowerPoint?
Did you submit one?
Yes.
All right, it should be.
What else you getting to some today? Did you get into some today, yesterday?
Today.
Today, how's the flight?
I wasn't aware, but there's that tournament in town, it was.
Oh, yeah.
I'm surprised I was able to find the car, to be honest. Been stranded at the airport a couple times.
There's a, no presentation file.
While getting loaded, I'll just kind of start, you know, the last couple years kind of communication for you has been relatively easy. The state was experiencing historic surpluses. Just last year, we had a hundred billion dollars. The year before that, it was fifty billion dollars. So it was, you know, generally fun to be able to come before you and share the historic programs that were being announced by, by the governor of what he was going to do with those dollars, everything from six billion dollars to bridge the digital divide, expanding Medicare to everyone regardless of their legal status, to funding for schools, mental health care, you name it. Unfortunately, today I'm not coming with that Rosie assessment. When the governor came before the legislature in January, he announced that the state was actually facing a twenty-two billion dollar budget deficit. And unfortunately, that budget deficit is expected to continue in the out years. Next year, it's expected nine billion, the year after that, nine billion, the year after that, four billion. So unlike previous budgets where it was, you know, about, you know, announcing very big programs that, you know, residents in Coachella could potentially take advantage of, this year it's going to be a budget that is very, very much one of tightening our belt at state level. The governor has proposed a number of strategies to try to create a balanced budget, everything from delaying spending on programs that had been announced in previous years, to shifting around funds from accounts, this is more inside or based on Sacramento, but you can shift the fund that pays for a program and create credits. And then, so and then he also announced some reductions in programs, but these are mainly programs that have been put in place over the last couple of years for budget resilience, like there was an inflation reserve account and other kind of pots of money like that that were really designed just to, you know, be used in a rainy day, if you will. But then there was another kind of strategy that the governor put in place, and these are trigger reductions, primarily to climate programs where the governor is effectively saying that in the event that the state's finances do not improve, these programs will automatically be cut. And there's a significant amount of programs in there, about four billion dollars, and that'll be important a little later, as I kind of discussed the opportunity before the city. There's one silver lining in the budget, it's that, you know, the expectation is that legislators are going to have to take some pretty tough votes, and because of that, leadership on both the senate and assembly side is entertaining earmarks. So these are going to be requests that can be made by our legislators, whether it's some member Garcia in the assembly, or our newly-elected senator, Mr. Pati in the senate, that, you know, we can submit forward, so there's going to be an opportunity for the city to potentially request dollars directly through the budget. We don't know how large that's going to be, it probably won't be in the millions, but it's going to be in the thousands, the hundreds of thousands, so I just wanted to put that before you as something to consider, and I believe the deadline for those requests is May first. In terms of legislation, there was about twenty-six hundred bills introduced by the deadline, about five hundred on the deadline day, and unlike prior years where, you know, the bills kind of followed a very specific theme, it was either going to be housing, it was going to be criminal justice reform, and you saw a lot of those kind of targeted in the subject areas, this year they're kind of all over the place. And actually, to that end, about a thousand of the bills that were introduced don't have any substantive language, and honestly, that's, that's more of a reflection of the budget. A lot of legislators probably came in, you know, in December when they got torn in with really big ideas, and then as the fiscal reality became real, they kind of had to go back and retool some of those proposals. So there's still going to be a big batch of proposals that we'll see with these bills kind of getting amended, and, you know, I'll certainly report back to the city as those proposals kind of come to light, if they do. But there is one theme though, that, you know, was clear this year, and that is a reflection of the budget, you know, bonds are back in both. By my count, I have about eight bonds that have been introduced so far, everything from veterans housing, affordable housing, K-12 facilities, flood protection, COVID agricultural recovery, you name it, you know, bonds are, you know, they're back. Certainly not all of these bonds are going to be, are going to survive the process, but there are two, and it's really the last two bonds that really have a really good chance of moving forward, and these are going to be the bonds related to climate resilience and the climate programs. And the reason I say that is because the governor, in announcing the trigger strategy, the trigger cuts, actually called for a bond to be introduced as a way to generate resources for some of the programs that would otherwise be cut. The two bonds that have been introduced, one is by our hometown assembly member, assembly member Garcia, and the other bond is by Senator Ben Allen, and I think that these two bonds have a very real shot of moving forward, and it kind of lends itself to the opportunity that I wanted to discuss. So the, the prospect of a resources bond in particular really creates an opportunity for the city to advocate for a program to establish a funding stream to help cities like Coachella comply with what is expected to be a pretty significant mandate from the state as it relates to drinking water. Specifically, the state this month is expected to issue a maximum contaminant level, MCL for chromium six. It's going to be coming out this month, and it's going to have some pretty significant impact on the city. Just by way of background, before I kind of dive into the proposal, just, you know, chromium- Um just uh by way of background before I kind of dive into the proposal, just you know, chromium is a is an odorless, uh smellless. Uh uh metallic element. Um the most cop- two of the most common forms of chromium are chromium three and chromium six. Chromium six is a a a form of chromium that has made its way into drinking water. And has been known to contaminate uh drinking water sources throughout the state. Most of the time, the polluted, the the contamination is a result of industrial processes. But as is the case in the Coachella Valley and certainly for the city of Coachella, chromium also occurs naturally through the erosion of of chromium deposits. Um regardless of how it emerges, um within drinking water, we know that chromium is a known carcinogen. And to that end, the state is required by law to establish a maximum contaminant level for chromium. In twenty fourteen, uh the state adopted such a ma- such a uh an MCL. And based on the city's own estimates of what it would take to comply, you were going to be paying about thirty six million dollars. Uh to build a facility that will allow you to remove the chromium. That uh investment was going to result in uh customers paying about a hundred and twenty percent more. A month for their water, I think it was about ninety four dollars, um which is a significant and, you know, frankly, uh an absorbable. Um investment that you would have to make. Um that MCL, um after it was announced, was actually blocked by the courts. Um it was blocked by the courts in twenty seventeen on the grounds that. To the the state is required to do two things in announcing um a a standard. One is that the 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 standard that's announced be technically viable, that it can be actually done. And the second item is that it be economically feasible, meaning that the state has to consider how a community, a working class community like Coachella. Would be able to pay for the infrastructure that it would need to comply with this standard. Um as uh so that standard was actually uh shut down by the courts. Well, fast forward, uh last year, the state released the draft. Of the new MCL, and it's effectively a redo of the original MCL. It's going to be ten parts per billion. And it really lacking in that robust financial analysis. Now, will the courts, you know, uh block this again? We don't know, you know, the courts have changed since uh since this first happened, so.
Really lacking in the financial analysis again?
Yeah, yeah. And it's kind of the consensus of the water community that will likely go to litigation. But what I'm not as certain about is, you know, whether or not this gets blocked. Um uh there's been a couple court cases that have occurred since then where the courts kind of concluded that the state's. Requirements around financial uh feasibility were not as stringent as the original court. So it's really kind of up in the air. It'll certainly be litigated when it comes out this month, but you know, it could easily be, you know, held by the courts. Um so, you know, to to, you know, that that's kind of the reality that we're facing. And what we're proposing, and we've been in discussions with some member Garcia, and this is something that we developed working with staff and. With the utilities manager, Mr. Garcia Lostrada, is that, you know, as part of the resources bond, specifically Mr. Garcia's bond. We want to propose that he establish a one hundred million dollar fund to uh provide technical and um technical and and. Assistance to cities as well as uh financial assistance for the actual capital outlays. For cities um to comply with the forthcoming MCL for chromium and to really target those dollars at cities. Where the um the state's affordability threshold would be exceeded. Um right now, the state's affordability threshold is um one point five percent medium householding. When the original um chromium six uh standard was put out, the state's uh existing affordability index is actually going to rise to four point four percent. She would absolutely, you know, talk about, you know, being about three times larger than the existing state affordability. It's the affordability index is designed to capture those instances where um residents would have to basically pick and choose between. You know, paying their water bill or buying another basic necessity like food or paying their electric bill. And again, it's one point five percent MHI, and the states, the cities would have gone up to four point four percent. So the way that we've structured the program is that this hundred million dollars would be available for cities. Where the MHI would exceed one point five percent, which is the state standard. Now, in discussions with some member Garcia, he's actually agreed to put this into his bond, which is good. Um but that's, you know, kind of the 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 easy part, if you will. Um the the hard part is going to be really building a coalition of support. Of cities that are in similar situations to really come out there and advocate for this. Unfortunately, the way that, you know, advocates and folks in Sacramento approach bonds is very much a zero sum game. Your win is my loss, your loss is my win. Um because there's only a certain amount of money that's in the bond. You really want to push everyone out so that you get the most, right? So your so that your issue remains funded. And so there's going to be other water uh players out there that are going to be saying, hey, we shouldn't put any money for chromium. You know, the cities that have chromium have known about it for a long time, they should have dealt with it already. So it's going to be important to really build up that coalition. I today had a conversation with the city of Winters in Northern California, very similar situation of Coachella. Um I had previously had a conversation with Watsonville, very similar issue of Coachella, but it's going to be important that we build up that coalition. And that's certainly going to be something that, you know, I'll be leaning on on some of you for, you have relationships with some of these other cities. Um and I want to make sure to take advantage of those as we're building this coalition and really trying to, you know, create a a strong coalition. And kind of make sure that this ends up in the final bond when that's decided. Um uh so that's uh my report.
Question, question, in in terms of the legislative advocacy.
Sure.
Um have you, are we making sure that as the state is drafting their Chrome six? You know, MCL and that they're not limiting our treatment abilities. So for example. This council doesn't know this, but you know, twenty sixteen, the state was only allowing a certain type of treatment. And come to find out that that treatment wasn't really sustainable, and the company that did it, they went bankrupt. And our neighboring city actually went in and did it and spent a whole bunch of money on it and. And it didn't actually work out. So so I'm wondering, you know, and and I can appreciate the fact that you guys are concentrating on. On trying to get some upfront costs because obviously, you know, the cost of technology is is significant. But if if I remember correctly, and I know Bill Patterson's here, I think our concern was the ongoing.
Yeah.
Uh maintenance and and ultimately the operational cost that well. I mean, at that time, it's four point four of 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 an average household income, which is such is crazy. It would basically force us to sell our our water utility or put it give it be in a very curious position. But I I'm I'm curious as to the legislative strategy that Gabriel and and his staff has undertaken. And then what are the, what are the points that you all have been really focused in on?
No, absolutely. And a great question. So we we have highlighted those items last year when the draft MCL was put out. We anonymously submitted a really long comment letter to the state. But we participated in the public hearing process, and then after the uh the draft was put out, we actually then convened meetings directly with the state to make those very points. Unclear whether or not they bite, right? I mean, the state was a little defensive when we were pointing out, for example, that, you know, just the the unmet need in in in. Coachella Valley would be like three hundred million dollars like CBWD, right? Um very defensive, and if you know, we were sending them our data, they were promising, you know, they were going to consider it. Um but the points have absolutely been made, um and those were engagements that we made with the with the city manager, with us, the utilities manager. Um and it was kind of us working in concert with CBWD to kind of, you know, come at this from a unified front. Because, you know, this community would be faced with an absorbing cost, just unclear whether or not they, you know, take that in. Certainly, once this uh standard comes out, we'll be out there kind of at the forefront, making all of these points again. Um uh but, you know, kind of in my conversations with the water folks, they're 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 kind of up the consensus that, you know, the state is just going to pivot to a redo of what they did in twenty fourteen. Which is bonkers, but that seems to be what they're doing, but we have made those.
Did did we also discuss, you know, moving from ten to fourteen?
Yes, yes.
And the state just wasn't.
Yeah, and one of the other points that, you know, we we actually made and that I actually made in a in a very recent conversation is that, you know, the state is required to update its public health. Which is the goal that the Department of Public Health sets for the amount of chromium that should be in the water. It's a really strict goal, I think it's like point. Point two parts per billion. It's really stringent. Um the state is required, DP, the Department of Public Health is required to redo that goal on a very frequent basis, and they haven't done that for years. Um uh so that would actually capture that, you know, whether or not the the existing standard we've adopted makes sense, given the science that's been done today. They just haven't. Um and that's the unfortunate part, right? Because they're they're looking at just basically do a redo and set themselves up for a loss. Our concern is that a lawsuit doesn't succeed, and that you actually have the standard imposed on cities like Coachella. Um where it's, you know, it becomes an absorbent cost out front. Um and that it's not taking into consideration those technologies that potentially could work in Coachella, I believe was tennis for it, I think that's what was telling me about. Where you could actually potentially pilot and try to get a sense of how this would work in the city. Um just unclear whether or not the city's going to, you know, take the feedback. They definitely took blowback last year. I mean, it was not only Coachella, CBWD, but a lot of water users as well. They're basically making the same points. It's just unclear whether or not they're going to, you know, heed those comments and, you know, incorporate it.
Yeah, I'm just curious because you brought in a, how you feel legally, we may not have standing. Uh. Would we be, would it be advantageous on our on our end to look at kind of legal? Standing or at least some like advocacy on legal language that could give us an edge up on on a legislative front? So in other words, if where where in law are you concerned? And maybe this is where we're going to have to engage. You know, CVWD, or I'm sorry, BBK and others. Where 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 are those points that you think there's weakness in the legal defense?
Yeah, the it really comes down to the financial analysis. I mean, the entire court decision that came out in twenty seventeen was that, look, the state put out the standard. But they didn't really consider how these communities would actually absorb this cost. Um and that's going to be the 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 point at which, from which, you know, the legal challenges are going to come. If as as far as the state directly kind of engaging on the legal side, my sense is that there's going to be enough players in the space. The big kind of Cal Mutual Associations or the California Association of Small Water Systems that we're very reactive in. Um they're going to engage and have, and they're going to take the 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 cost and, you know, expend the energy to kind of do the legal. Portion of this that I don't think it's necessary for the city to directly engage on the legal side. My sense is that, you know, these folks are going to, you know, it's going to be a frontal assault, try to challenge the MCL as it comes out. Um and then, you know, really wait for the courts. I don't think the city necessarily has to go there. For us, the push is going to be, regardless of what happens with the MCL in the courts. We want this funding stream created within the bond so that in the future, you know, uh another MCL is put out. That this funding stream is available for cities like Coachella to be able to draw down resources to be able to comply.
I said.
Very such station, this is supportive like declarations, we we just, yeah, they they let the legal effort, which was in come. Yeah. declarations and statements from our clients.
We had a three pound effort. We had a legal strategy. Obviously, we had an advocacy strategy on the on the legislative side. And then we had a compliance strategy, which I think. Looking at the city manager and thinking, what's going to be the strategy? What's the recommendation?
We would have to research that and see, probably revise our studies and nobody's going to the council, but.
Well, it really sounds like we're we're what about a month away?
By by all accounts, it should come out this March. Um so yeah.
The other side of this is that when is the compliance period? You know, if this does get done.
Yeah, so when I said that, it's going to be a replication of what they did in twenty fourteen, I was slightly misleading. So one of the only thing that the state is willing to give you that they actually put out in their draft is that it's a delayed compliance schedule. It's going to be like two years if you're a water system of a certain size, up to about four years. But they're not doing anything to reduce the cost. And kind of the point that I've been making at the state is, you know, thirty six million dollars is unaffordable for Coachella today. Three years ago and three years from now. Doesn't change anything, but that's the way the state is approaching it, just to be.
And 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 let me just paint the picture for the council members of for the average utility water bill is thirty two dollars. And what we're talking about potentially based off of this compliance standard, then having to do the upfront costs, maybe we get a reprieve. But the O and M, you're talking about a a an average water bill of ninety six dollars. And that would be extremely, extremely, extremely expensive. And if you want to see a community get upset. Water is a way to get them upset.
A great presentation, though, that's, you know, uh just to move on along the conversation, I, you know, I think you covered a great deal. Um and budgets all beat up the same topic that Mayor did, but I in in our committee organizing. Uh meeting a few months ago, I brought up the uh suggestion. Uh and I saw that you've done this in other cities where we have ad hoc ledge committees that could track. You know, stuff like you're talking about, like the bond and other needs of the city, and I think I just wanted to highlight and press for the need of forming that. Uh can you speak to in in other cities that you that 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 you consult in, what are some structures?
Yeah, so the 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 city that comes to manage the city of Pico Rivera in LA, um we have an ad hoc committee there that's actually led by one of the members of the council. And it's a, it's an opportunity for kind of staff to get together and kind of brief on the various programs that they're working on. And to then tie that into Sacramento and then have a frank discussion of like, alright, should we engage on this grant program that's being proposed? Should we engage on this legislation that's being proposed? And it's really an opportunity to kind of a keep myself accountable, but just kind of keep everyone updated so that everyone's kind of shooting at the same goal. Um and it's a structure that I thought was very effective in Pico that we used pretty effectively last year, where we were able to draw down seventeen million dollars for the parks. Um and it was kind of, we were meeting monthly, um and it was kind of just having those conversations informally. Um and just kind of updating ourselves and and, you know, I would often share like, hey, you know, who's coming into the town? Are there any elected officials? And then we would try to coordinate like, hey, you should make sure to talk to these elected officials since they're coming through, whether it's a supervisor in LA. Or the congressperson, just kind of, you know, just getting everyone on the same page and structure that double very.
Well, well, let's get it done. I know that there was a, we didn't have to do anything in terms of change the ordinance, uh some sense more informal, but I just want to get the ball rolling. Uh and uh, you know, set up a meeting in March. Uh obviously, Mayor, you 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 can appoint the county member. Uh but I'm more than happy to serve on that ad hoc committee. Um but I'd like to get it started, you know, sooner than later, especially with some timelines regarding our bonds and other issues that are going on in the state.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we'll work with the city manager.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
And then just, or also and and. Leaking all of this, and we did talk about Chrome six, and believe me, we're going to get probably do further dives on Chrome six with everything. But uh there is still money in Sacramento with different programs. And so I'm very curious as to uh what you and our staff is targeting. And it'd be important that you write a memo, uh or if you could give us a brief outline of what those, what those grant considerations are. And, you know, there was a uh, some more weird article that was saying that. Coachella's mastermind had to get grants, that's like some devious action. And it's like, no, it's actually a really smart action of how we're going after other people's money to bring home. Because the criteria at the state uh in the federal government recognizes disadvantaged communities. And if we're masterminding equity in disadvantaged communities, then I'll take it.
Yeah.
But it it's just, I I'm really curious as as to what we're thinking. And what are the strategies we're going to employ uh that that's 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 setting us up to get grants potentially?
Absolutely. We are having those conversations, everything from, you know, looking at the safer program, which is the state's uh safe drinking water program and the criteria that they use. Um to even considering, you know, what the state put out with PPOS. Um the state had invested a hundred million. I'm about two years ago, I'm really looking at that criteria and like, how does it mesh up and could you potentially access that? And now everything's on the table.
Uh and I would just tell our staff too that I know that there's a lot of money available. Uh for uh green infrastructure. And at the federal level, there's a ton of new billionaires that are about to be named. Because the the federal government just put out a substantial amount of resources for for green infrastructure. And so in town, we have only four charging stations anymore. And there needs to be some effort on that. And then there's also, I think CARB also put out three hundred and fifty million dollars to try to get some rebate programs. Where people can go and buy, you know, a Tesla like our planning director has, you know, and it's just. It's just one of those things that like, hey, we didn't put that information out there to our community, and we need to identify that.
Yeah.
And so.
Thank you.
There's no charges in Coachella.
Gave you a Tesla?
Uh I'm gonna, alright, moving on, we have item number four, I'm gonna uh abstain from this item. And you guys have a fabulous conversation about picking colors.
Oh, three B, item three B, not not.
Oh.
Um. Andrew, you're leading the discussion? And and we have them there, right?
Yeah.
Uh may maybe the 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 picture we can move a little more forward, they're not visible and not in. Correct, yeah, we can't really see. Good. Oh yeah, you you you're printing them, let's use them. Maybe a little more centered, that would be, the public's not blocked. A little more in the center, I think you won't block the public so much. Yeah. I can't see. Shouldn't do like Frank.
Wait for the presentation.
Like, see, I'm, what is your eye catch? Awesome. Oh, wow.
Okay, um, so we wanted to bring this tonight as anniversary item. Because picking the colors for the library is a critical path item that, and we wanted to get by in front of city council. And from planning commission, just to make sure that every restaurant, as far as what colors we're considering for the fire station. Um. We do need to, the reason we need to pick a plaster color into a critical item is. Uh, because we need to place the roof, so no further construction to really move forward until we get the roof down. Because we need to have the building waterproof, where we can put in mechanical and put in electrical and drywall and really start doing the finish work on the inside. Um, so.
Cool.
We have been having a lot of discussions with the client, fire station, with planning and with city manager. About different color options, different color schemes and, um. You're looking at ideas to move forward.
I heard we're a month ahead of, we're a month, more than ahead.
We are ahead of schedule still, yes. We wanna keep it that way.
Let's go, let's go.
Um, so you should recognize this exhibit, this is the exhibit that has been presented to city council many times. Um, so the original plan for the fire station, what had been specked out was to match the colors at the library. Um. If you're fifty, you should all be familiar with the library. Um, and I don't wanna disparage the library at all, it's an absolutely beautiful building. Um, but those colors, the, the main colors for the building are three shades of, are two shades of very light tan and a white. Um, it works for the library, it kind of pops good on the library, because the library has all of that decorative tile under the windows. And a big display windows, it kind of break up those color schemes, and it has the decorative windows up top with the, um, with the wrought iron decorations. So having three very similar light colors, um, kind of works on that building. Uh, but we kind of feel that those. That scheme of three very light similar colors, we don't think would work as well at the fire station. Um, so we've gone back and forth with a lot of different color schemes, um. You know, deciding not to go with any type of oranges, because that might clash with the kidney center that's right next door. Not wanting to go with, um, green shades, because that'll blend in, because there are gonna be trees in front of the building and stuff too. So trying to have something that will. Look good for the community, um. But still be a, a color scheme that's appropriate for a fire station. So the, the first. Option that we had looked at was to keep with the fire station theme, but just go with a little bit darker tans. Um, so it's still gonna be a white and two shades of tan. Um, and then we would add a fourth color, a very dark, the darker brown. Along the base area. One of the issues we do have at the fire station is the. The light colors, uh, you can barely tell on this exhibit. Can I see him house? Well, anyway, on the. There's a mouse. Nope, that's someone else's mouse. Um. On the. I use this, I see. Um, you know, on the pergolas, you can barely tell that there's a difference in color between this base layer. And the actual top of the pergola, that's the very light shade difference that I'm talking about at the library. So we would wanna do all the base layers in a, in a much darker color, um, that also protects it from scuffing, protects it from, um, the bootmarks and, and that. You know, kind of dirty work that you get on the lower levels when you have too light of color.
Yeah.
Um, so the other color scheme we'd come up with is mainly grays and blues. Um, so the predominance of the building would still be a white color. Um, and we would have a dark gray across the bottom and potentially use some light blues and, uh. Um, kind of a darker grayish blue as well for some of the pop out panels. So we're looking at these kind of two different schemes and we want the feedback from, from you guys as to if you think either of these are, are good directions to move forward with. Um, I do have a bunch of slides here. Um, these are not, I just wanna point out, these are not architectural renderings. I prepared these myself today in PowerPoint, so. Um, we will have kind of professional architectural renderings that we'll take to planning commission next week.
Okay.
So this is kind of my attempt today to highlight how the colors might look, um, to give you guys a good idea of kind of what we're looking at. Um, so looking at the other elevations, um, we would try to kind of keep the light beige colors at. Um, more as background colors, that, the dark browns for the pop outs. And like I said, the predominance of the building is still white with the, the brown bottom, if we were to go with that. Darker brown color scheme, looking at how that would look if we went for the blue color schemes. Um, I would limit that light blue, it wouldn't be, you know, really highlighted, would be. Um, kind of the background, the background colors to kind of almost make a halo effect on the, on the wall.
Andrew, I think, uh. You know, they're, they're both good, and, and I see this is an inspiration of, of what we have in the library, which is darker.
Yes.
I, I like this too, where does this, this inspiration come?
The. The inspiration for the gray and blue?
Yeah, like what, what were you thinking when we said, oh, this is blue? I, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, I, I think, like, I just wanna understand the idea where we got blue and not orange, I just.
Um. I would say it was a collaborative effort with, um. Working with the architect and working with planning, um, and just looking at what colors are available. Um, there is a limited amount of colors that are available to choose from, because this is an acrylic, uh, plaster. So the colors actually, um, mixed into the plaster ahead of time, that causes less fading, less maintenance. Um, so there's not, there's not a wide variety of colors. So looking at all of the colors available from La Habra. Um, and these aren't the only four color samples we got, we got. I've probably got fifteen different color samples, um, so we, you know, looked at the different patterns, looked at the colors available.
And so a lot of staff input came into, these are the top two.
Yes, this has been, this has been a very collaborative, um, process with, with staff, with fire and with the architect on the, on the project.
Uh, fire, uh, uh, chief, you guys, these are your top two favorite as well?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good. So you're open to either or, do you have a favorite?
It's hard to choose. Uh, the, the tans look good. Uh, I think that the, the grays and blues is, is a bold strategy.
Yeah. Yeah. A ca- council comments?
I, I do have much more pictures too. Um, so this would be the look from the front, um, I mean, formally white, because there's the large pergola structure in the front. Again, yeah, it would look like it was blue. Um, I also tried to recolor the, uh, the elevations. So a brown scheme and a blue scheme. A brown scheme, this one, you can kind of see how the, the light colors would be behind the main wall to kind of make, uh. It would kind of give a halo effect to the, to the buildings. So just, I appreciate any input, any direction, so that when I go to planning commission, we have, um.
I'd like to hear from the council as well.
I like the blue gray, I think it's just like the fire chief said, it's pretty bold, um, and it's something different, so. That's my opinion, I like it.
Councilor Figaro, doctor.
At first, I like the tan color. Right, when I, because it reminded me, you know, it's consistent, but you know, really, when you're walking by a firehouse. You know, that blue and gray really kind of pops, especially with the red fire truck outside.
Yeah.
So you should have put a fire truck and then. Uh, but I like that because of the, the way the architecture, um, on the gray, you can really, um, see it come out. Right, and give us vibrancy to the architecture, because you have to do due diligence to that architect and the work they put in, it really gives that, uh, I mean, it also. You have to remember what's up the street, right? You have the, the, uh, beautiful apartment, you have the other one that's gonna be coming in, how do you, you know, differentiate? You know, that still has that architecture, but it's as you're walking down and, and people are driving down and, and really giving that, okay, that's the firehouse, right, makes it distinct. Yeah, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, councilor.
Um, I think with what's going on with the pueblo, we have a revitalization plan, we've been, you know, using a lot of the tans and the light browns and. Um, I've, um, basically become a little. Bored of it, I know it extends all the way to K F C, and that's something that I've always had, um. A criticism of, just because it just doesn't bring any, um, light, it's just very, you know, I, it's. It's very boring colors, you kind of forget that some of these commercial buildings are there. So I definitely like the, um, the gray and the blue hues. Um, what other colors do we have in the revitalization plan? Outside, Gabriel probably knows, Gabriel, but it's outside. Yeah, I think it falls under like different types of architectural, like, uh, Colonia, I think it's, um. I forgot what the others two styles are. There's, I, I like this style a bit more.
Yeah.
Um, I think the colors are, are better than the tans and the hues.
It sounds like we have consensus, Andrew.
Uh, then also, just wanna comment. Catty corner to the fire station is also the post office, which is also, um, blue, white and gray hues as well, so would. Kind of complement that structure.
Yeah. You know, the, you know, the, the, this is, you know, the, the whites are nice, because then we have other murals and stuff around the city and it allows, but I like this bold option too. And I think we have some consensus. Um, you heard, you heard the crowd and it's gonna go, thank you. Thank you, moving on, uh, passing it back on to the mayor.
Really pleases me that you guys could decide on the colors.
It's a correct texture, yes, I wanna make sure what it was gonna feel like.
I can tell you're having a lot of fun with the project by the fact that you are going through the texture. Getting a close up of it. All right, um, we'll move on now to written communications, uh, clerk, any written communications?
There are none.
Thank you, we'll move on now to consent, uh, calendar, it's recommended that consent items be acted upon time immaturally. Unless separate discussion or action is requested by the city council, what are the wishes of the city council?
Uh, if we could pull item number twelve.
Can you pull item number nine, I just have a quick question on that one.
We'll go in order, we'll, uh, we'll. Ask for item number nine to be pulled, and go ahead, council.
Just wanna, you know, it's a great event, I just wanna make sure, you know, uh, in the language, on, and it's the ten thousand dollars, it's, uh. It's up, it's to spend up to ten thousand dollars, just that allocation, it's just a, a large sum, that's my question, you're good. Yeah, that was it, okay, just wanna make sure.
Okay, we'll move on now to item number twelve, this is the purchase of a new Ford Explorer truck.
Thank you. Is it, does this fall under you?
Um, we do do the purchases for vehicles, so that's why the item is submitted through my department. Uh, the vehicle as identified, uh, would be for code enforcement, and it is through funds that are, um, allocated to the abandoned vehicle program. Um, and it, it was approved by the county to use these funds for the purchase of a unit. And the division does have one member of its staff, the manager, that does not have an assigned explorer at this time, so this would provide, uh, the division that unit.
So the monies can only be used towards a vehicle?
It can be used for, uh, a few different things, my understanding, this is an allowable use.
What else is it allowed?
Can I defer that question to the manager as he's.
The funding is, uh, through a vehicle payment program that we are part of. And so it actually can be used for some type of percentage of staff time, uh, in any type of. Equipment or supplies needed for this program. So I actually took this to the board and, uh, we do have some money set aside. And at this time, they're actually suspending our, our account right now, because we need to lower the balance down, so we actually put in for a vehicle, because there is a vehicle that's needed at this time.
I guess that's what I wanna get to, is that, you know, we know that code enforcement is a small department, you know, there's a lot of technology. Um, you know, that's needed or upgrades throughout the city of Coachella, and so I just wanna make sure that it's going towards the best use of. Having a vehicle and not other programs or equipment that is needed in code enforcement.
Right, this is strictly for, uh, it's gonna be used, uh, it's getting a reimburse hundred percent through this, uh, funding. Uh, and it is needed in the, the department, right now I'm using a loaner vehicle.
Just curious, how many people do you have on staff?
Uh, three field officers and myself.
So four of you guys, but you're pretty staffed up, right?
We could use more.
Thank you.
Say you have a loner, what do you mean by you have loner?
I'm using a city, uh, loaner vehicle.
Well, we gotta get to your own car, it's what you want.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Renee.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll move forward, any extensions? Any notes? Move on now, new business, this is a consideration to fill five planning commission vacancies, uh, I imagine that there are a few of the app. Of four.
Four puzzle, plus four, four.
It says five here, it says, so it's four permanent one alternate, that's what I understand, so five. Um, is there any applicant that would like to address his body? Come on up, introduce yourself. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council members, thank you tonight for allowing me to speak, um, my name is Isela Murillo. I am a lifelong resident of the Coachella Valley, and I am a current applicant for the commission, the planning commission. I currently work for Desert Care Network as a marketing coordinator. In that position, I've been able to plan, implement and execute, um, not only events. But also seminars, symposiums, health fairs and heart talks that allow us to bring the community out. Uh, outreach to community, especially our goal is to make way to the east side of the valley with the Latino community. Um, besides work, I do have an incredible family and a one-year-old daughter, who I love spending time with, she's, she's pretty cute. And, um, I am, I would be incredibly honored, uh, to serve my community in a capacity of planning commissioner. And, um, I am willing and I am ready to give my best to help the community improve and move forward in a positive direction. Especially for the future generations like my daughter, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isela. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. Council, thank you. So my name is Miguel, I'm, uh, was one of the former for planning commissioner for the last four years. It was a tough situation from COVID, uh, we got to do, start some meetings and, uh, trying to. Make the, uh, work, everything, so I think, um, having the opportunity to continue working with the city. Uh, for me, I think will be great, since, uh, I've been a long time resident, let's see, of Chelas, I think, uh, the city is moving. In the right direction, so I think we should continue with the same, uh, augment, so I think, uh. We, we be prepared, uh, with the new commissioners that you guys select. I think that they should put, uh, all the effort as well as me and now, I think we should just continue moving on. So much.
Thank you.
Any other?
Is there any on Zoom maybe?
What I'll do, anyone on? Like to address?
The others.
I do not see any hands on Zoom. There is a hand, actually, there is Diana, can you just one moment?
Diana here.
There you go. Okay, Diana, we can hear you.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, city council mayor and city council, uh, team, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Diana Ramirez, and I reside in the city of Coachella currently, I could not be physically present due to a work commitment, but. Um, I also applied, I noticed that on LinkedIn, we had an extension to April sixth, so that's why. I submitted a little bit later, as you have it noted on your agenda, however. However, I come to you with uh, much experience. I'm coming and returning to the beautiful city of Coachella where I went to Coachella Valley High School and uh, probably return to my community to serve. I did some time outside of Coachella, living in different cities and different communities and different capacities. And so I come to you with this opportunity and I would be honored to be a part of this uh, committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Anyone else?
Okay, believe that is it for Zoom.
There's another one, Angela.
You see another one?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. Yurima, okay, Yurima, I think we can hear you now.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, hi, um, I'm Yurima, sorry, couldn't be there, I'm having, I'm not feeling, I'm feeling a little under the weather. Uh, but I'm a lifelong resident of Coachella. I grew up in schools within the CBUSD school district. Um, I'm really involved with my community and I really just want the opportunity to represent my community, especially those um, those voices that don't often step up. I've been fortunate enough to talk to a lot of residents and we have a lot of folks that have a lot of opinions, they have a lot of input to give. But unfortunately, they just don't feel that um, they're being given a space to, to speak up, right? And so it's really about all of us coming together um, and being able to encourage those folks to get involved, right? We want, we want to hear from everyone, we want to hear from our locals, we want to hear, we want to make sure that everyone's a part of the conversation. So that's why I wanna, I want to serve on the planning commission and I want to give a little bit more back. And previously I was on the um, cultural and arts commission, thank you.
Thank you, Yurima.
All right, just wanted to state for the record that it was not a requirement that they show up, but it's good that those that did, we thank them. And I just want to stay allowed, we have uh. We have about eleven uh, applications and five positions. And so obviously, um, not everybody can be on the commission. And I will say that if it's okay with any of the members, that I would like to ensure that uh, that these applicants also just automatically uh, become applicants. And we'll check with them for uh, the park and rec district as well as um, maybe even the, what park and rec, but the finance committee. I think that'd be good, uh, that way, you know, folks can serve on those committees or if they would continue or if I'd like to. Uh, with that, um, pretty much we have, we have five openings. Uh, I will go ahead and pick an alternate and I'll let uh, each one of the council members nominate a person. I do understand, obviously, that uh, one would serve two years on the permanent side. Now go ahead and let uh, uh, Mayor Potem Barlaza pick that person. And then I'll nominate an alternate, so if you all want to start, uh, doctor, if you want to start uh, on with your applicant.
I think, uh, just to clarify, there's two, uh, two-year, because uh, when, when council member DeGatto.
She's, she's gonna have hers.
Right, she has two years more. So there's, yeah, so there's two, whoever she appoints, whoever I appoint, two years.
Yeah.
Just want to clarify.
Okay.
Uh, I'll get started, you should get started, uh, I, I, I think obviously all of these applicants are, are great applicants. And trust me, is, is in a easy job to pick one person. Um, that's why I wanted for all of us to be able to have a say on all five people in January and in February when I brought up the conversation. So unfortunately, you know, we, we're in a place where each council member appoints one person, that was the wishes of the council. Um, and so I, in, 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 in the movement of talking about Coachella becoming a, 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 a city in, in, moving towards uh, our own grid and energy being a big topic. Uh, and it was IID and all these different committees that they're forming, I really looked in having uh, someone that was uh, an expert in the field. And I felt that Jason Hernandez was a very qualified person uh, to serve on that. And so I'll nominate Jason Hernandez.
Okay, next person.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, mine, uh, my nominee is Isela Murillo. Um, I've known Isela for quite some time and so she's done an incredible job uh, being part of the community, lifelong resident of the city of Coachella. And um, she has a wonderful family that, you know, most of them live here, she has a lot of, uh, an extended family here. And so I think it's important that we have, um, we have more women on, on the planning commission. I started in, in the planning commission, I was appointed by, by the mayor, so really grateful for that. And it was a great opportunity for me to not only serve my community, but also work alongside with staff and, and really learn a lot about what was happening in my city. So um, Isela Murillo is uh, my nominee.
Thank you, next person.
My, um, my choice is Yurima Arvizo, who is a, you know, a longline resident of Coachella, but also, you know, in her application, you know, she has an extensive background working in different areas. But also is, you know, as well as a homeowner and someone who thrives in the community. And as Ms. Councilwoman, uh, Vitan talked about, it's very important to have a young representation, also young women on the commission. So I think that is why I'm moving with my decision on that.
Okay, Councilman?
I'm gonna nominate Diana Ramirez because of her extenship, extensive background in planning and her different uh, roles in government. Yeah.
Very good, and I'll nominate as an alternate, Oscar Fonseca uh, as an alternate. If uh, we can get, uh, let me go ahead and uh, put, move forward on each council member's nominee, including my own. Uh, move that as a motion, is there a second?
I, I do want to make comments and I, I respect everybody who's applying for the planning commission. It takes a lot of commitment, a lot of time, a lot of energy. Um, you know, it takes a lot of involvement, being out there and engaging with residents. Um, you know, you have to study everything um, and read everything that comes through, there's so much dedication. And while I appreciate uh, Mr. Hernandez's application, I am gonna ask my colleagues to, while it's not in our code to have stronger language when it comes to family members. I do think that we need to adopt one, I really do. And, you know, I've known Jason Hernandez um, for a few years now, you know, but because he is brother, he is the mayor's brother. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask my colleagues that with all the applicants that have come through and there's eleven, that you please reconsider and give someone else an opportunity to serve on the planning commission and that we, you know, continue to, to provide and to build trust within the community. And that we give everyone equal opportunities to serve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Oh, seconded.
Can we get a real call?
Yes, council member Delgado?
No.
Council member Alarza?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Calazza, my apologies, and council member Figueroa?
I abstain. Well, I vote no.
Okay, um, council member Vitan?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
Aye. Move forward now to item number fourteen, this is.
Connect, kind of, for quick, the only thing is that we don't know who these positions apply to because there's two-year terms and their terms to two thousand and twenty-six.
So mine would be for the two-year term.
Yeah, that was, that was stated earlier.
Did you say that?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, yeah, Mayor Potem Calazza and myself, Gabriel, thank you.
We'll move on now to uh, item number fourteen. This is a seeking city council direction on continue to allow for Zoom participation or presentations.
Before we move forward, I, I, I wanna add a, I think uh, I, I did wanna, I, I, I respect your, your position, uh, Councilman DeGatto. And, and I actually wanted to have that healthy debate on each one, like, like, like you signaling out someone. I wanted to be there and I brought it up for discussion in January and, and I brought it up many times, so that we can all have a healthy debate on each applicant.
I don't.
You, you just.
Continue to talk.
No, well, I wanted to make a point, I'm, I'm saying.
We have to.
He's along me top, and, and so I just want to say that I wanted to be there and you decided that you didn't want to be there, but now you want to have that conversation. And so it's, it's, it's sort of, you know, we, where are we, right? If you, I, I'm more than happy to revisit how we appoint commissioners. If you want to debate on each single person, uh, and, and, and not allow for what you have suggested, uh, I'm, I'm fine with that too. But as it is now, uh, and, and, and that because you're not happy because of perception, uh, there's a lot of perception of, of, of what can be done. There's a perception of, of appointing uh, political candidates that have endorsed you or have supported others in past commission and, and past committees and, and current committees. Uh, there's a lot of that and, and, and we could talk about those things too, is, is this a political favor because you've been supported? I'm not, you know, I'm not going there because we're, we're, we're talking about individual appointments as you supported. Uh, and so if we're gonna move forward, if you want to have a debate about the commissioners so that we're not here uh, in next month, then I'm more than happy to have a, a change the, 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 the ordinance. Uh, if not, then, then, then we keep as is, but your comments are only gonna go as far as, as here.
So it doesn't have anything to do with the way we nominate people at all, nothing to do with that at all. What I'm asking is that when it comes to family members, that we try to stay away from appointing family members. And there isn't any political candidate that has given me their endorsement that's on the planning commission. I haven't appointed any, while some members ran, I didn't seek out their endorsement and nor am I um, appointing them either.
It, it has happened, I mean, I'm not gonna get into the weeds of it, but if we're gonna talk about.
You're gonna have.
There's a perception. It has happened, I just want to clarify, it has happened.
I think that's enough to pay.
No, I, I know, I know, it doesn't work that way, so. No, it doesn't.
Actually, we're moving on to the next issue.
So I do want to make sure that the family members should not be appointed and that many cities do have stronger language and their code of ethics to not allow extensive family members. So what we have right now is immediate family members, so that means a spouse, children uh, is excluded, it's that immediate family members. What I'm asking is that we expand on it, so that's also brothers and sisters and mothers and fathers. Many cities have adopted it and I'm asking that our council also support a code of ethics. It has nothing to do with the way we nominate people.
Bring it back.
But rather than that we make sure that we're not appointing family members.
I think you made your point. We'll move on to item number fourteen, we will, and it's seeking direction on how to handle these meetings. Uh, I think it's pretty clear that COVID, in terms of every single agency, in terms of how they're dealing with it, it's a, uh, everybody's going, coming back to live meetings and in-person meetings. I think we should follow suit, there's no reason that we should be different. People need to come to City Hall and address us and that'd be great. Council.
I, I like the option of the public being able to watch the meeting via Zoom, just because uh, a lot of folks get out of work late in the evening. And some of them have to, you know, go home or pick up their kids from daycare, whatever that may be, childcare. Um, and I think it allows them that flexibility to be able to tune in, know what's going on in their city. So I would prefer that we keep that option of, you know, them being able to zoom in and, and participate still, so that's my opinion.
I concur with Councilwoman Vitan on the ability for people to make comment via Zoom. Is it, it does make it easier for some of them to participate in comments, but.
Do you want to make a motion or?
Um, so I mean, I, I agree with my colleagues, it doesn't make any sense not to go forward with this type of um, uh, participation to allow many folks who cannot attend in person.
So what's the legal finding, Carlos, that we have to make that poses a threat under the governor's bill? As I understand that bill, uh, and this is how many agencies are defining it, that we have to adopt a, a legal finding that poses a threat to why we have to maintain.
That, that'd be more for the legislative body itself, like this, the actual city council members.
Right, but as long as, that would be if we were trying to say that we can zoom in, but that's not what we're trying to say. We're saying we're allowing the public to tune in via Zoom.
If, if, if you, if you, for the legislative body, the council members, if we wanted to continue to allow uh, virtual participation, yeah, we would need to find, uh, if there's a certain emergency, we can allocate that or to have to find some recommendation of social distancing by another body, uh, under the new bill twenty-four forty-nine, obviously you can zoom in if there's just cause. Or uh, there's a emergency situation, but that only applies for three consecutive months or twenty percent. Um, otherwise you have, you still have the, what's called the, the traditional brown neck teleconglishing, reach teleconglishable location. We have to list your, your name or your, your, your location, your, your calling location from the uh, from the on the jet that's out.
Thank you, Colonel.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it, I think uh, we need to come back and, uh, I think staff and, and, and council, we need to come back in person. Uh, and uh, you know, to allow participants to be able to call from home, uh, I think it's fine, obviously, we, we need to do a, a good job in sort of a, uh, how do we, uh, now, you know, I think the intake on, on the names and people that talk is important. Uh, in the past, during COVID, there was many times where we, you know, I, I didn't know, you know, there was just, I don't know if it was a fake name or not, there was just a first name and we just didn't, I mean, sometimes we didn't, we never knew who was talking. So I think that, that's gonna be important, sort of how, how do we intake that information as when people speak here? I, I think the county representative does a good job, when you call in person, you identify yourself, you provide an email, um, you sort of, you know, being able to address. Yeah, being able to do something like that, maybe, you know, uh, looking at what other cities are doing, but I, I'd like to be able to do that instead of people being able to call anonymous into, in, in, into, to body.
In two thousand and twelve, when I came to city council meeting, you had to, when you addressed the body in the front, you had to state your uh, home address or wherever you were located in the city. So that might be impossible, it has to be assumed, so you know what they're.
Yeah, and maybe the clerk uh, takes note of the home address, maybe we don't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I'll comment, we do take note of the names of the individuals that are, that have called in and even in the beginning when we had a lot of voicemails, we did take names. And um, that's all noted in the record, that we had a situation with a particular, with email situations and we did address that and eliminate that from happening in the future. So that has been taken care of.
And, and I think if they're gonna be on Zoom, they should also turn on their video. And I think that's important, I mean, they do it here when they're in front of us and we see them and if they're gonna be on Zoom, I think they should turn on their video as well.
When they speak.
When they speak.
Maybe, I think we could, I may be right, I don't know. Because, because there's options to call in by phone.
Rather than.
Yeah, if they call them by phone, fine, but if they're on Zoom, they should be able to see them.
In terms of a live, but that's pretty flexible, but there's, the legislation dealt with you as a body, right?
Yeah.
Deal with the other part, uh, just real quick, just in terms of, you can require somebody to state their name, you can ask for it, but they're not required.
Right.
That's uh, I want to say that. Um, the other part, yeah, it's kind of, the, the legislation doubt with legislative bodies participating remotely, this other part, um, kind of was, was it because you were purchasing remotely? You were also needed allowed for the public, but that was tied in more to you, but this, this area is a lot more flexibility and, and people are doing it differently, different agencies, I think, I see what's working, working for them. Um, some of them are looking to see how their technology works, I work with some agencies where the technology doesn't really work, so they don't even have that option because it just doesn't work. So, um, I know some that will stream it on, on the public access channel live and then they, so there's a couple of options, so that's, we're looking at some sort of guidance from the council on that. If you have some direction, we can, we can come back and formulate something that um, addresses the, the, the wishes of the city council.
It doesn't bother me that folks from the community are, don't show their videos, sometimes they have kiddos, sometimes they're at work, sometimes they're on their way home. Um, and it can be a bit humiliating to turn that video on. If it's community members, I, they should have no problem not turning it on. I think if it's staff, I think we should require staff to turn on their videos. But when it comes to um, our residents and community members, the stakeholders, I don't want to eliminate them or discourage them from calling in if they have to turn their video on.
I'm fine with that too.
Well, you have a direction, Carlos, are you looking, you're looking for a direction?
Yeah, I think it's a pretty consistent way we have it right now, uh, we'll look at it specifically for this. Yeah, I think it's a pretty consistent way. We have it right now. Uh, we'll look at it specifically for this meeting. We have a lot, we know we're allowed, we were allowing. Uh, participation previously, and it seems this is consistent with your approach. If I miss something, I'll I'll tell the staff. It seems. The way we continue, the way we have been allowing it, the way it's reflecting this meeting is consistent with what I'm hearing from the council.
Okay, we'll move on now to item number fifteen. This is a public hearing item. This is Taco seven six zero. This is alcohol sales, entertainment establishment.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council again. Gabriel Betis here, Development Service Director. This item is conditional use permit three sixty. It's a modification to the conditional use permit. To allow the on sale service of alcohol, uh, which is beer, wine and distilled spirits for Taco Shop seven sixty. And also an entertainment permit to allow for limited entertainment permit at the restaurant. So the location of the restaurant is at the northwest corner of Grapefruit Boulevard and Avenue forty nine. It's an existing shopping center. Um, just some background on the entertainment permit. The city council uh needs to approve entertainment permits. Uh, you can consider conditions regarding days and hours of operation. Total number of persons allowed during operation, traffic control, noise, a security, safety and use of handheld metal detectors. So the applicant does request approval of the conditional use permit three sixty. But a modification, so the planning commission first approved the conditional use permit. And Taco Shop seven sixty was looking to include the sale of distilled spirits. Uh, one thing that we did miss in the application is that they wanted to extend their operating hours until one thirty AM in the morning. And the reason why they want to do that is also to allow for entertainment. And so when you have entertainment, it does, they do need an entertainment permit. What the restaurant would like to do is allow for playing of recorded music during the week, karaoke on Thursday. And live performances by musical group of three to four persons Friday through Saturday. And this this restaurant is at Plaza Mi Pueblo Commercial Center. Um, and it does include other tenants such as the uh real a a realty company, a barber shop. And a tattoo and body piercing business. So the CUP is needed when you increase the scope of a alcohol license. So since they were going to sell distilled spirits, does require approval by the city to do that. Here's a site plan that shows the restaurant, which is at the corner. Uh, suite at the commercial center. The applicant also proposes outdoor seating and service of alcohol in the area that looks uh like a rectangle outside the restaurant. And that's a gated uh outdoor dining um area. There is already improved parking on site, twenty four spaces. And this is a closer floor plan. You can see the dining area. So the applicant would propose all of the proposed entertainment, playing of music and musical groups inside the restaurant. It wouldn't be allowed outside. As far as conditional use permits, um, there is a seven hundred foot distance requirement from sensitive uses like churches. Uh, so there is the the mosque, Islamic Society of Palm Springs. That's within seven hundred feet. And we did notice them about this public hearing. Uh, but also needs to be seven hundred feet from other establishments that sell alcohol. So the nearest is five hundred seventy feet away is from buffet. And then also uh within seven hundred feet of of residential units. That's considered a sensitive use. So the nearest residential um unit is three hundred feet away. We did review this with the sheriff's department and Lieutenant Vasquez didn't have any concerns and is aware that. This establishment uh does operate in other cities. There was an added condition by the planning commission uh when they did consider this condition use permit. And the entertainment permit. So for condition number fourteen to the entertainment permit. They wanted to make sure in bold that the management shall ensure that there's no loitering, littering or consumption of alcohol. That occurs in and around the property. And then added condition twenty two that there be a minimum one licensed security officer. Uh, between Friday and Saturday after ten PM. When there's inner entertainment that is occurring. So either it's musicians, karaoke or similar related entertainment activities. So uh, that's the end of my presentation. So staff does recommend that the city council approve both the conditional use permit modification. And the entertainment permit. The applicant is in the audience. So if you have any questions, I'm sure they could answer those as well. Okay, council, any questions?
Gabriel, what is the occupancy there? The maximum occupancy.
In terms of number of people, I'm not sure about the total people. Um, the applicant, I know, uh, and I don't know, Graciela, are you available on the total occupancy? And Graciela Green is in the audience representing the applicant.
Thank you. Graciela, can you hear us? Angela, there's someone raising their hand. Is that one of the owners?
Alejandra Barceló. Hola, buenas noches. Sería aproximadamente alrededor de cincuenta personas. Calculamos ese límite.
Okay, y piensas que vas a tener más diario? Más que cincuentas personas?
They they wouldn't be able to have more than the maximum occupancy that's left the restaurant.
Well, I say that because we have a lot of, um, you know, restaurants that are doing the um entertainment. Uh, part of it and they have like, you know, a band, it's three, four folks that are playing in a band and. Obviously, it brings in a lot of folks. And so I think it definitely surpasses, you know, the maximum occupancy. And I just want to make sure that everyone's operating safely. And so that's just, I want to make sure that, um. You know, the owner, the applicant understands that we cannot suppress that fifty percent um person in there. And then, um, I guess my last question is too is, you know, I know that we always put it, we agendaize these items and we say, well, it was open to the community. But the reality is most community members obviously don't know we have an agendas or don't go and, you know, look at all the items and read them. And so I just want to make sure that when we have these um facilities that allow. Uh, or we're allowing entertainment and we have loud noise. Uh, that it's not going to be a nuisance to the residential communities um next door to it because they are within the seven hundred. Foot distance. And of course, I I'm a big supporter of businesses and I like everyone to be able to generate additional revenue. I just want to make sure that we're operating within certain parameters so that we're being respectful to um our residential communities nearby.
So, um, Councilmember Delgado, I think it's possible she might not heard the question because you sounded very faint.
Maybe ask the.
And she is raising her hand again.
Yeah, but she's on muted already, so. She's not on mute.
Se podría modificar para hacer que haya la capacidad de personas, el límite que está apto ese negocio. Entre cincuenta, setenta personas, creo que son más de setenta y cuatro personas, pero podríamos no pasarnos del límite de la capacidad.
Gabriel's question three. So I I think what we would, we should do based on the the question that's come up is that. We should limit through a condition of approval. The number of people under the entertainment permit with the restaurant capacity. Right now, the condition of approval doesn't say that.
Right, so there's that's the city and the standing capacity. In the in the facility.
No.
There's no standing capacity because it's all based on the restaurant.
I I don't see why we should treat her any different than we treat everyone else. And the the idea that we should somehow. Figure out how to go beyond the seven hundred scope or or try to communicate with more people and treat her different. To me, it raises a lot of suspicion uh in terms of retaliation. Uh, I just, I find the 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 act of trying to treat this applicant different than the way we've treated any other. Uh, you know, CUP applicant, just alarming. So I I don't, I'm not in support of treating her any different. Uh, I I think that you've done your job. I think the public process has gone through its job. Uh, and there's no need to treat any small business different uh than any other person. And if we're going to go that way, then are we gonna? Vote to go and amend all the other CUPs to reflect the change? I just, I don't I don't think that that's a an adequate way of of uh of looking at this. I I think that you've done your job. And the question to me is rather than we want to support this applicant as is uh and and go from there.
So I'll clarify a bit. At no point, and this happens quite a bit where my words are twisted.
What's what you're saying?
No point. Are you going to allow me to speak now?
It's what it's what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm going to speak. Thank you. So at no point did I ever say that we should not allow this business to go forward, not at all. To the contrary, I said, I'm always a supporter of small businesses, especially when they can generate additional revenue. And obviously, having entertainment would allow them to bring in additional revenue. The reason I talk about the um the noise and the occupancy because this is something that we actually brought back in the public safety subcommittee. To look at um special event permits and entertainment permits. And again, just to make sure that we're operating safely. And that is what I'm referring to, not to not allow her, but as I said, just to make sure that we're operating within parameters. Um, for all the businesses. And this is something that, you know, came through because of the stuff that was going on in uh it Melindo Sinaloa. Or is it El Sonora? Well, nevertheless, um, you know, we had quite a bit of shootings. And so we went back and we seen that actually the permit had expired in two thousand fourteen. And so we just raised a lot of questions when it comes to safety. That's it, safety. And um, you know, we were waiting for that to come back and um it hasn't come back. And so that was going to be my next question is, you know, when do we see like the special events and entertainment permits? Um, you know, just again, to make sure that we're operating safely. And I know that topic came up of security, whether we uh have them provide additional security. Um, so these are great questions to have for all the businesses that are operating within entertainment permits.
Uh, uh, it, there's a difference here. You're 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 talking about an applicant in terms of policies and procedures and limits, et cetera. Versus enforcement of what's being, you know, uh, approved. And to be that, that's if the question is, how are we ensuring that the conditions of approval are being met? And that's for public safety and it's also for uh code enforcement to go in there and actually enforce these. But in terms of treating people different and doing something different, calling out the seven hundred foot line. Uh, calling out, uh, you know, uh, you know, the perhaps who's enforcing the discrepancy and putting the onus on the owner. Uh, it really is kind of to me just doing something different than what we've been, that's what's been the norm. So so my point here is that we shouldn't treat it any different than any of the other CUPs. If there's a need to enforce public safety, code enforcement can get involved in how we do those enforcement.
I'm not, I'm not confusing the two mayor, which is why we're asking for the special events and what the status sounds like. That is it. But you know, you're you're twisting, you're twisting. You're just twisting words and you're making it difficult. So I just, if we can bring back the special event stuff, I know that we've been waiting for it. As far as this applicant, as this applicant for this applicant. Is that I don't have any issues with you and your business at all. Um, again, I think it's wonderful. I know that's something that the former um owner wanted to do. I think they had some type of bus coming through or van that played music that was also allowed. Um, I congratulate you and how successful this um restaurant has been. I eat there quite often. I take people there quite often. I I love the food there. I think the entertainment permit is going to bring you more business. And so congratulations to you. And again, I completely support it. I just want to make sure that, you know, the music and. That's something we had many, many conversations when it came to all the entertain or all the business of entertainment permits.
Sorry. Like I won't get a word in if I don't say Gabe. Is the entertainment going to be indoors or outdoors? There isn't anything outdoors, right?
It's required to be indoor.
Indoors, okay.
If this provides any comfort, and you you might recall this with the container park with Nick Mesa. Uh, he had to come back before the end of the year, right? So it comes back to the council. Um, if something's not working out, the council has the ability to add conditions or not.
Just then.
Permit.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks, Gabe, for answering my question.
There is a, there is no motion. What is the wish of the city council?
Make a motion to move it forward.
Is there a second?
Was the public hearing open?
Oh, let me open the public hearing. Seven forty five. Any one of the public like to speak on this item? I'll close it. Can uh, we, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Vilja?
I.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
I.
Mayor Hernandez.
I. Move forward now on item number sixteen. This is the Tripoli Mixed Use Project Proposed Revisions. I do want to say for the record that I'm a thousand feet from this property, so I can vote.
We have a brief presentation on this. Uh, you've heard this project before, so we'll just go over some of the modifications. All right. So this item is the Tripoli Mixed Use Project and it's the hundred eight unit apartment units and retail development proposed on two twenty acres. At the south, uh, actually the northeast corner of Caesar Travis Street and Baghdad Avenue. So in two thousand twenty two, the council did approve this project. And then again, in November ninth of two thousand twenty two, the council approved First Amendment to the project, which were related to design. Um, some of the modified conditions that the uh planning commission and city council did consider and approve. Were such sign modifications such as removing stop windows for the um. For the elevations, uh, removing, uh, bringing cornice trim closer edge of roof tile. Moving the fifteen foot first floor plate height requirement for the first floor retail. Um, removing the need for residential level on the first floor to be above three feet. Uh, three feet above the sidewalk, removing the two-piece clay tile requirement, removing the smooth stucco finish requirement. Removing requirement for sidewalk separated from the street curb by landscape parkway. And then removing the requirement for bullnose corners. Uh, just some background on the applicant's request. Uh, the applicant is requesting to amend one of the conditions of approval. Um, number nine for the project and that condition requires an elevator in both. Uh, of the two buildings proposed for the project, building A and B. So the condition reads that there be elevators in both buildings. The applicant um uh requests that that elevator not be in uh building. Uh, be in in building A. Uh, but the applicant also requests that they add a new condition of approval. That uh the developer shall construct a park on Main Street. Uh, the IID parcel, that's the parcel the city has acquired. From ID, subject to design as approved by the city parks director up to a maximum cost of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Inclusive the landscape architecture and agency fees. So that was the request. Uh, when the planning commission did consider that request by the applicant. Uh, the applicant, uh, I'm sorry, the planning commission. Uh, but did uh approve the removal of the elevator from building A and just leave the elevator in building B. Uh, and they did add the condition of approval as requested by the applicant to. Uh, establish a minimum construction cost of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. But they added additional language that the applicant didn't request, which was. All to also include and half the elevator cost. Um, with any savings achieved by the developer on project costs to be used to increase expenditures in park improvements. And so some of these park improvements were going to occur utilizing infill infrastructure grant that the applicant did receive. So just uh some background, this is the location of that Ninth Street Park ID site. Um, so located at the corner of Ninth Street and Chitty Lane. And so this would uh be developed under that condition by the applicant.
Good.
Uh, here's just the vicinity map of the actual project location for the mixed use project. Uh, the two buildings that we're talking about, and so it would remove the uh one of the elevators. And then this is the overall design that was last approved in November. We are going through plan check right now, so this is how it's looking. So the top was the approved elevations. And the bottom is what we're seeing in plan check. So um they have been making some modifications due to some of the conditions of approval. And these are some renderings that the applicant did provide to staff.
A lot of hipsters. You know, they don't, they don't have, you don't have people like us.
This is, this is the the elevation. This is, this would be the corner of Tripoli and Sixth Street. So you could see the retail that would face Sixth Street and then the residential on the second and the third floor.
Can you just say that we're not, intend not to gentrify Coachella? It looks interesting. It's affordable housing.
Your comments are on the record. Um, so just some slight modifications they made um that uh eliminate that that landscape parkway between the curb. Uh, so the other elevation, elevation B. So this is what was approved at the top. Uh, by the Plan Commission and City Council, what we're seeing in plan check is what you see below. Uh, but the applicant is also still making modifications based on staff comments. Uh, this is the elevation you'd see from Caesar Chavez Street. So you can see the ground floor. Uh, retail that would be there at the corner of Caesar Chavez and Baghdad Avenue. And this is what the elevation would look like at that street corner, Caesar Chavez and Baghdad Avenue. So again, you would have first floor um retail and then residential on the second, third floor. And uh, let's see. Okay, there we go. So one of the things, I just want to point out one of the changes. So it does. The first rendering shows the parkway between the sidewalk and curb. So that was removed to mimic the. Um, Polo Viejo Development, so maintain the existing sidewalk. Uh, and then just increase the the hardscape from there and then have planners for uh trees, trees like day palms and canopy trees. And then the four plants that were approved. So uh, this project can still be found to be exempt from sequin as an infill project. Uh, there was a letter that the applicant did provide that we included in the staff report. And so they they included some options to consider with respect to any kind of savings that may be. Uh, achieved for the project. Um, so it's up to city council if you would like to consider these options that the. Applicant is considering and then it probably makes sense to allow the applicant to be able to speak to these options. But you have a few different alternatives. Uh, staff is uh supportive, was was supportive of the original request by the applicant. Which was a maximum expenditure of three hundred fifty thousand dollars uh for the, for the park. Uh, but the planning commission did uh approve the project to include. Plus any uh what would be considered half the cost of elevator would be added to the three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So it's really up to the city council if you want to uphold that condition that the planning commission did approve. And I'm not sure what half of the elevator cost, so we probably asked the applicant that question. So staff recommends approval, uh, the resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is in the audience.
All right, let me go ahead and open the public hearing at seven fifty-four.
I'd like to, I would like to speak to us.
Colleen, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Thanks for having us back today. We have been hard at work.
If you could just speak, speak into the mic so that we can hear you on the screen. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Sorry about that. Um, so as you may remember, a few months ago, we were having. Some financial issues with the project and we're having trouble covering everything that we wanted to do. So we've got all of Sixth Street covered from Caesar Chavez all the way down to Palm, all the offsites around the project. And so this is the last piece of what we need to work on. And the idea is to eliminate the the elevator bank of two elevators from building A. And then move that money over to Ninth Street Park. And it was a little unfortunate in the planning commission meeting that one word and or or. Was something that uh that wasn't clear in what they were saying. So the debate had been. They wanted to make sure that if we had a five hundred thousand dollar reduction from eliminating the elevator bank. That we would take that five hundred thousand over to Ninth Street Park. But somehow it became three hundred fifty plus the elevator savings, which is not projected to be that much. So um what we would ask is to keep it at the three hundred fifty. Um, if you wanted to speak to elevator savings, you could say a minimum of three fifty or the elevator savings. And then um. On the issue of project savings in general, what we'd like to do is collaborate with the city on savings for the project. So on every project that's like this, what we do is we spend a hundred percent of our budget. So um we also start out the project with a balanced budget. That includes adequate contingencies to ensure that we can finish the project with without a doubt, because we don't want to run out of money. So it is highly likely we will have contingencies to spend on other issues. And we'd like to collaborate with the city on that. So what we were proposing is to set up a series of meetings at fifty percent, seventy-five percent. And project completion, where if there are funds, then we could collaborate on how those funds could be spent. Um, they could go to the park. We've also talked about the possibility of enhancements to the retail to encourage retail tenants. Um, there are also some possibilities that the building itself could need enhancements as well. So uh, that's what we were requesting as we are working toward finishing up our financing and starting construction in May.
Okay, council, any questions?
I think um I like the applicant's proposal, you know, that. After explaining, they explained the really that whatever those savings is on that. Or, you know, the half the elevator cost, the minimum through fifty. But I think, you know, what would be some ideas that you would have, you know, when collaborating um with a project savings that you might have. Um, long term, like ideas that you. How do you envision really? Improvements or other things really in the area, right?
Sure. What happened with the first project is that we did have a little bit of savings. And then we had discussions internally about what would most benefit the project. And that's what we tried to do to. To pick up the sidewalk on the Sixth Street side that we weren't obligated to do through negotiations. So we went ahead into that. Uh, we set aside a TI fund to encourage a tenant to come into the retail. That hasn't been as effective as what we had wanted. So um. Some things we've discussed is the possibility of getting the retail spaces uh ready to issue as a permit. So get them designed and and ready for a permit. So it, when a tenant comes in, they can pick it up. If we have extra savings, we could do vanilla TIs, ready to go for somebody to come in though there. That's very important. But the park is also something that the city is very interested in. That's, oh, that's great. There's been some discussion that perhaps what if another source of funding comes up and then the park is funded, then and we're conditioned also to do the park. Then there might be something that we'd need to change then versus if we have broader language now, then the city would still have discretion. Over any savings and could move it as as you like to that park, another park that would qualify. Um, for the spending or um retail or items that are improving the building. So we're really open to all of it.
Council? Seems like everyone's speechless.
No, I I um, I like the, you know, I I like the idea that we're getting a park. Um, I think it was gonna be important for when you review the applicants, if there's, you know, need for. People that mean require an elevator, then you know, we are strategic on how we place people in certain apartments. Is gonna be very important on my end. I I think I I I was an advocate of bringing in the second elevator. Uh, I'm glad I did because now we get a park if I remove it. Um, and so it it uh, I I'm fine. Uh, with 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 this solution. Um, and uh, in the, in the three hundred fifty or or the savings um of the elevator.
Um, this is my question to our grants manager. Are there other opportunities to fund the park? I mean, is there anything out there, um, applications that we could put out so that maybe we offset some of that? Yeah.
Yeah.
If you could, there's people online that we have to factor in. And they can't hear.
Yes, possibly. There's other possible ideas on other grants like um the upcoming TCC. This can always be integrated. Um, but you know, as you know, those are very, very competitive grants. And so um, I, because the park uh size is so small. I think I I don't know that I could go for some of the typical Prop sixty-eight grant um opportunities. And so.
Colleen, on your timeline, when you have the park scheduled for?
A lot, a lot of the work uh around the park is to be determined as we figure out uh the funding that we have available. Um, just to clarify, or we've already said that we would, so I'm not giving anything up. We are going to pay for the planning of that park. So we have the the planning piece, need to collaborate with the city on outreach to figure out what the scope is and what the park should be. And then we probably have to have a phasing plan. So as soon as we get all that done, if the budget is in our um. Our finances, the three hundred fifty base, then we're ready to go and spend that money. Um, so it can be pretty much right away.
And I asked about the timeline. If it's gonna be something towards the end, then it gives us um a larger window to seek out applications for. Any grant monies that are out there to, you know, if possible, have a win-win situation.
Sure, it can be timed. If you prefer to wait, that's fine too.
Thank you, Colleen.
Well, I've never planned the city on a hope and a wish for a grant. You know, I just, uh, I I I think it's important that we we stick to uh as much. Uh, of what we put in the original grant uh in order to comply with what we want to see as a community. And as part of that original ground, you put in that Ninth Street uh park. And so you should put that Ninth Street Park in. While I understand that you would wish to put that money back into your project to try to help spur. Uh, you know, uh, business or something like that. There's other means. And I think you guys, as a developer, can probably step up. And find those means in which to help uh a a a small business do tenant improvements or or whatnot. Um, you know, I I think for us, it's it's important that physical infrastructure continue to be built. I do like the way you're talking about, you know, uh, having a scoping session, looking at a, a community engagement. Uh, developing a phasing plan, you know, and maybe even construction documents. It's probably what's, it's gonna take about three hundred fifty thousand dollars to do all that. And if we can become project ready and then go after a grant. That's better than uh, you know, uh, not having a solid plan and then going forward. So so I I think that's what I'm supporting. We've been very uh helpful and workable with Chelsea. Uh, you, I mean, this is your guys' what, third project, fourth project in the city, fourth project in the city. You know, and and we've uh, we've built a lot of affordable housing. Uh, and and I know he's joking, but uh, uh, earlier when we started these apartments, the big concern was that we were gentrifying Coachella. And uh, I I found it foolish, because it's like, how do you gentrify when you're building affordable housing for the very people that live within the community? So it's actually called community development. Uh, it's not, it's not gentrification. It's called community development. And so I think it's important that we just state that out loud, because that's what we're doing here. We're building a good community for the people that live here and grow, or raise here, et cetera. And on that note, I think what's really, really important to me, and I know you guys come back to me and say, well, we can't do that for whatever discriminatory reasons or. But it's very important that as we build these units, the priority be given to Coachella residents. I know, I know there's different requirements and.
That issue had come up and I had them run statistics on how many people in that uh complex were from the city versus outside the city. Uh, the hundred and five units, it was ninety-something that were from the city. So something like ninety-five to ninety-eight. So the vast majority of the residents were folks who must have known about it or gotten an application early, first in time, their first line. Uh, and so we've been able to.
I think that's great news, because there was people that were out saying that we were bringing in people from other towns and. And it became political and I was like, what are you talking about? Everybody that I see is like, I, I would have schooled them for something.
Yes.
But but, but I think it's just important that those myths be uh uh just taken on and and they be clarified. We're excited, you know, in terms of how much this project is gonna be, what's the total budget right now? How do you think? Forty-eight million?
Something like that, yeah.
About fifty? Yeah, and then uh, you're gonna build a hundred and.
Hundred and eight units.
Hundred and eight units. Uh, again, we're gonna be helping those with disabilities.
Yes, ten units for, set aside for uh residents where one of the occupants has a developmental disability.
We're gonna make sure that we can tie it into the uh transportation, you know, amenity that we got on the previous property.
Right there. So definitely within walking distance.
Okay.
What's the uh total savings now for the removing the elevator? Expected to.
The savings. Um, so we switched elevator companies from a more expensive to less expensive. And so we're about two fifty, two seventy-five. So the the total savings will be less than the three fifty proposed.
What was it, savings of the expensive company?
Five hundred thousand.
So there's some savings from there too, including the second elevator, the first elevator?
Yes, the the bucket is getting quite tight. So what we're trying to do is um have a robust budget that's comfortable for our lenders and investors. And get the uh financial transaction closed. It's gonna have contingencies in it. And that's why we're. Uh, proposing to collaborate with here, the city, to spend any savings. To direct us as you like, but to to ask you to please help us have a good contingency going into that financial close to keep our financial partners comfortable.
And we can push the park to four hundred thousand dollars today?
I I think she's asking for the discretion to work with staff.
We actually already did. So we have the three fifty, but we're picking up the planning piece.
Okay. Good.
And and I do believe that any cost savings, you work with staff, but it should go into our community. Because ultimately, uh, these residents are gonna be walking around. They're gonna be living here, bicycling here and. And you guys are all part of a vision of, you know, really changing this community.
Yes, and that's something that we're very proud of.
And as Mark, I did want to mention something, Jim Anderson from Chelsea as well. So when we talk about the community, one of the ideas we've had is putting money into the tenant improvements to build out the space in advance of. Residents or tenants coming in. That's also for the community to activate that space, because we want local residents or local tenants to be in there. So this is gonna be the discretion that we have when we we discuss with the city manager and the city engineer and you folks. What do we want to do with that money? It can be a lot of things. We're not trying to tell you what it should be, but there's lots of opportunities that can enhance the community beyond just.
Jim, I.
Public infrastructure.
Jim, I just think that that uh, when it comes to going after people's money, other people's money. There's more opportunities for small business development and enhancement and and. I I think we, I think we can find that. If it's a hundred fifty, two hundred fifty to really try to create an incubator or something. Uh, the Fed has got a lot of money for for uh, you know, that small business development and doing some of those things. Whereas in parks, it's very competitive. And and it's all about project readiness there.
That's precisely what we want to hear. Where is the best place? And we will listen to you folks.
And then we've been good about finding you money. I've been trying to find you guys some money recently with the solar project there. And hopefully that works out too, because that'll be a cost savings. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know.
But we appreciate the partnership we've had with the city, with all of you folks. You've been great. Uh, city manager, city engineer. So we appreciate it. We can't wait to get started.
It's a better, better meeting than last time. It's a better, better meeting than last time. Yeah.
Let me go ahead and close the.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And then with the condition.
Yeah.
That you'll work with staff.
Right.
I think, you know, and Colleen mentioned about that and. Right, it's uh instead of the in condition number eighty-one.
So it's just three hundred fifty or the savings, correct? But minimum to three hundred fifty. Yeah, 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 good. Right, that's why the minimum, it's or, but minimums to fifty because we won't go or if it's less, you know.
Okay, and that's condition eighty-one and so.
Can you please speak into the mic?
Okay, that's condition eighty-one. Uh so not limited to the parks. So it could be for the things worth that, right?
Good.
Okay, there's a motion. There's a second. Okay, there's a second by Dr. Figueroa. Is there a roll call, please?
Yes, council member Delgado.
Yes.
Council member Fiero.
Aye.
Council member Virgen.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Elarsa.
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez.
I will move on now to uh public comments. Does anyone in the public would like to address the city council? Anyone in the public that would like to address the city council on Zoom?
I don't see any hands raised on Zoom and I do not have any written comments.
You have written comments?
No, no written comments and no hands raised on Zoom.
Well, we see no one uh that would like to address the city council. We do have some community members here, but. With that, we'll move on to council reports on miscellaneous committees. I'll start to my right. A doctor.
Yeah, um. See, was able to participate in the Read Across America. Um was able to dialogue with young. Coachella residents. And so that was really great. Um in that sense, I was going to attend the Riverside County Office of Education. Dr. Gomez is. State of the state of education for the county. Um there is some great programs that the R C O E is working on and something that, you know. Have the um city manager and uh work with me. There was a program that they have. It's a financial wellness at the. Our C O E is is conducting and and supporting and so how we can bring that here to Coachella because they did have one in D H S and it was really, really great. So how can we really bring that? Here to um to Coachella and how we can, again, start save. Fund for um uh students at a young age for them to be able to start saving for college, which is a very important thing here in our community. So. The one thing there and then um uh the other one, you know, I know that the project is working in Sebag for the uh C V sync. Um but I'm not sure when's the last time you had received a presentation about them or kind of were, you know, the project is starting. It's under construction. Um because that was one of the biggest concerns from the fourth grade class that I I attended. They were asking about the stoplight. Um but in specific, the, you know, the light, I talked to an officer there from the Sheriff's Department, the light on Grapefruit and Caesar Chavez resplit. The one where you're going straight down uh from Grapefruit, the the light switches when you're still on green on the other side. So um just kind of like safety. Safety there. So doesn't Ryan, you know, um comments on for this for this evening.
Thank you. Did you say C V sync?
Yeah, the C V sync. It's the lighting. So it's the.
I'm aware of it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you. Um just a couple of comments. Uh like Dr. Figueroa, I had the opportunity to participate in Read Across America. Actually went to Coral Mountain and read to three uh classrooms. Um they were fifth graders. And it was very entertaining. Um I read to them Green Eggs and Ham by Dr. Seuss. So I hadn't read that book in a really long time. Um but it was a really nice experience to be out there with the students. Uh they were very engaged and so that was really nice. And the other thing is uh today is uh International Women's Day, so Feliz Dia Mujeres. Um great opportunity to uh really talk to um. All of the amazing women who have raised us and been there for us and encouraged us. And also just a reminder to um. Ensure that we're working together, that we are working collectively and encouraging one another. Um every day, not just today, but every day. And so a little shout out to my mom who has done. Um really good job at just uh being very empowering and and I know a lot of us have that amazing experience. So um. Yeah, Feliz Dia and uh hoping to keep uh moving forward and paving the way. And may we remind ourselves every single day that we're here to pave the way for future generations. Um again, not just today, but every single day, may we have the opportunity to wake up and do something for someone. And um making sure that we're setting a good example. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I missed Swobscito Sunday um this last week. I'm very asthmatic and so I've been very sick yet once again. Um I just haven't been able to shake it off since last year. Um another uh thing that I need to mention is that for Sunline, I serve on their board and. Uh Lauren Skyver is is no longer with us. We are going through the hiring process now. Um and so once we appoint someone, I'll be able to share who that new uh or who our new um CEO is. Um additionally is that I'm still waiting for the half a million dollars that we're supposed to be reviewing for. To support small businesses. Um I would like that to come back. Um we can have a study session on how we're gonna be allocating it. Um I know it's something that I've been pushing for over and over, but. I would really like to start um to get that going and I think um that's about. That's about it. Oh, you know what? Um also is that um since we had the um. The meeting in two thousand twenty-one, um we had a few things on the uh agenda. To bring back and another one was the environmental study session. Um we're still waiting on the um study session or the assessment. Um this of my colleagues wanted for uh the city of Coachella Police Department. Um I want to know where we're at with that as well and just some of the other stuff that I've been inquiring about. Um to Gabriel Perez for the special event permits, for the entertainment permits. I know that's something that. We said to bring back. I know there's other things that you're looking at and I know you're looking until you're gonna compile it all and just bring it back out one time. But I would like to see those things come forward as well. Um one of the last things that um council member Biman Hasinto. Before she retired is in the Public Safety Subcommittee, you know, a lot of our firefighters just wanted um. To address the false alarms uh that we've been getting and that's something that we had asked for at that time. And I know she was very specific in asking Carlos is uh the attorney that was uh looking at that. And I feel very specific in when that was gonna come back and at that time it was what we're gonna bring it out. Um to council meetings out and that's been about six months ago. So I would like to see that come through as well. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Uh it's the, I'll start off by uh. Uh Happy International Women's Day. Um you know, like Stephanie, just wanted to share. Uh you know, words that fortunate to have been grown. Uh raised by a lot of strong women, all my mom and my tias grew up in a trailer, a mobile home park in Oasis. And a lot of my neighbors uh took, you know, we were sort of a, we grew up in a very tight-knit community where we always took care of each other and everyone's mom. My mom was working. I was able to go knock on the door next door and eat and uh and then now, you know, fortunate to have a great partner. Uh Lucero that uh guides me and sort of puts he- heads on my shoulder and and uh and and the community, just in in everyone that we get to work with every day and. The diocese and the staff, um you know, the the if we can allocate to put the money in terms of how much money. Are the women in our staff brought to the city and improvements, you know, I think we, you know, we celebrate a lot. So you know, it it we wouldn't be. Our city wouldn't look the same. Uh and it looks, you know, beautifully, you know, because of the contribution of of women. Um I I don't have a lot of committee appointments. I was um very, you know, been very busy with work and and life and so that's why I had. In in the committee appointments, I I removed myself from a lot of committees. Um but I do wanna uh suggest that we do have. Uh wanna, you know, that 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 um ledge committee, we wanna, we could organize that Gabriel with some of the department heads. Um and if we could schedule a political committee, I'd like to, you know, bring bring um, you know, have conversations. Uh often we hear things that we're discussing political committees, but we're never brought to the diocese. And I think I would like to change that. How how can we have those conversations at the committees and and bring them forth? Um and so as as a as a committee member there, uh let's schedule a meeting. That was also one with the seniors. Um and uh other than that, uh 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 this this Saturday is uh where, you know, community of Maritza and the team and. Working with different, the childcare consultorium and R C O E and all most other partners are gonna be at Veterans Park for the uh Nino. Uh a lot of uh community resources. A lot of information, I think, you know, for the residents that are hearing at home and. Or others in, you know, we've done a good job in sharing on social media, but anytime you attend those events, you learn a lot, a lot, you know, sometimes. We are here in the diocese or you hear other other people uh ask about some resources. And if you attend some of those events, you find out a lot of, a lot of things that we want are already happening. Some other agencies are working on and so. Um and so it I it it, you know, I encourage our our community members, our partners, nonprofits and those that, you know, to attend and. Uh ga- gain information. So uh said of that, uh uh thank you and I'll pass on.
Well, thank you for that. Um just a couple of different uh concerns that have been brought up to me repeatedly. You, we've made a number of different water leak repairs where uh our infrastructure in the middle of the street uh breaks. And staff goes out, fixes it. And uh and what's been occurring is that the repairs on those brakes. Been very concerning for a lot of our residents uh insofar as uh the. Uh the, I guess it's the cold patch doesn't actually stay and uh from what I understand. Is that we kind of let uh the number of repairs accumulate, but we're not factoring time. So while we may be looking to try to get a budget of a hundred K, um you know. Time may lift, a lapse for, you know, two, three, four, five months. And that's in someone's front yard and someone's uh drive or right out of the driveway. And it's just becoming more and more of a problem as some of our infrastructure gets older. Uh so that's been brought up to me. Uh Andrew uh as well, what has been brought up to me. Uh is I know that uh obviously the uh. Cable channel or uh uh is or or cable company is is actually putting in fiber optic. And they are uh cutting through streets, sidewalks, et cetera. And they're putting cold patches in as well. Uh one of the uh, I'd like to understand what is gonna be the repair plan. Uh hopefully, it's not just a patchwork, but they actually repave or take out the whole slab of concrete. Uh and don't leave us a patch job. I think that's important because uh residents are concerned and they've been calling me and saying, hey. Uh I know they're putting in fiber, but what is gonna be the repair plan? And I really don't have a an answer, so I'll bring that up. Uh I also got a lot of good feedback from our L and D meetings. Uh I am. Uh and I think staff is recognizing that uh there are uh folks that are moving into our communities with. A high level of a degree of concern and questions uh regarding depreciation schedules regarding. Uh HOAs regarding uh public safety and being able to put a a speed lights or safety lights in absence of public safety. Uh and so uh these residents are 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 really asking, you know, how. What's our funding plan for some of these depreciated assets? And I think those are great questions. Uh we may not have the answers. But it's something that we really need to think about as these L M Ds uh age and as these budgets uh uh, you know, either. Are um adequate or not. Uh and so I think that the more we can provide data to the community. The better off we're gonna be because uh they're asking and some folks are moving in from other communities into our communities. And there are those communities, we're providing those L M Ds uh with those responses. And so if we can prepare. Uh those documents or at least that understanding of what depreciated assets look like, what's our repair plan? And maybe that's something that the council needs to get educated on as well, because I think that's very, very important. Uh I did have a conversation with Maritza uh regarding uh Bagduma Park. I did uh ask her. To look in the future to do some plant replacement uh on on front of Duma Street from the, from the. Uh what would be um. Uh the pool area to uh the boxing club, that whole area, that whole stretch. Uh one, two, three, four, five trees were knocked down during the last wind event. And uh and during that wind event, we lost all our shade trees in the parking lot. So so they're all gone, but there's a lot of. Different landscaping that's missing. And uh I think it's important that we uh get an update or that we get a plan. To do some plant replacement on do on on Bagduma Park. I think very, very important. Uh I would like to get an update uh and very concerning uh for me, Mr. City Manager. Uh that uh Lauren Schreiber is no longer gonna be at Sunline. We do have a public works project in the works with Sunline. And if we can get an update on where that project is at and when, when, what we should expect as a community uh regarding. Uh you know, the the public project that we have with them. Uh and then, you know, I I do, I'm all for codes of ethics and transparency. And I think it's important that uh any grievances filed on any council members uh be made public. And the public has a right to know. And it, Carlos, you can bring that back to the council. We can vote on it. And if any information is sensitive and needs to be redacted, it should be. But I do believe that grievances filed on council members should be made for the public record. And with that, Mr. City Manager. The floor is yours and uh you can update us on anything you want.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to give you, give you a reminder, we are having our design workshop Saturday, March eighteenth here at the Coachella Senior Center at nine A M with. Mister Henry Lenny and uh as indicated, we have a lot of events this weekend with Swobscito Sunday and the Dia de los Niños. Uh I do have a report uh for you, an update on your sunlight on project. So. We talked to their, uh Andrew was able to speak with their project manager. Uh they're going out to bid on March uh seventeenth. They'll have their pre-bid on March twenty-eighth. The open bids on April eighteenth and they won an award on May thirty-first.
Very good.
And that's all my comments.
That was easy. And with that, we are adjourned.